Item on the agenda is approval of minutes from our September 10, 2018 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented in your packets? Commissioner Alpa moves to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Best seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. All right. Next item on the agenda Vermilion Street Corridor Study Presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wrong presentation. Let's go to the next one here.
Mr. Hensman.
Thank you. Well, Commissioners, I wanted to bring forward the Vermilion Street Corridor Study Project, and it's something that was finished up in April of this year, but with some other items that we had, hadn't had a chance to put it on the agenda, so it's a little bit past when we approved it back in April, but I think it's still a good thing to present to the Council, to the Planning Commission here, as an update of what has occurred and what the study is all about and what it's going to do. So I'm going to go through a recap of the study itself tonight, and then I can stand for any questions after that. So we did this project study on behalf of economic development along Highway 61, all the way from downtown to the edge of town, 36th Street. I hired House of Levine and Associates to help us out with this, and then we also had a steering committee of the Vermilion Street Corridor, which was made up of various citizens that helped us on that project as well. So one of the things that we want to be able to do with this was primarily an economic development study, was identify redevelopment sites. We also looked at aesthetics, multimodal transportation connections through Hastings. As we all know with Highway 61, it's a curse and a blessing to have a roadway that has 30,000 vehicles plus a day. It means, from a commercial standpoint, it's desirable for people to see, for businesses. From an access standpoint, it can be a little bit challenging from time to time. So what we did is we divided the corridor into a few different districts as we go down. I'll talk about each one of these districts individually here. So we looked at the district, looked at redevelopment sites, looked at the characteristics of development, and came up with some different plans for each of those. These are some of the opportunity sites that we identified. I'll go through that in a little more detail. What I should note with the opportunity sites is these are example sites of what we looked at today that could be developed. It's not necessarily something that a particular landowner would choose to develop that way, nor would this plan be implementing someone to develop because the plan is here. It doesn't have any bearing in law. It's a plan that would show a concept for development, so I think that's a key point there. So if somebody sees the property here and goes, "Hey, I still feel I'm going to continue as is, thank you" on that property, the intent of this is certainly not to force them out, but to develop ideas for how that property could develop in the future. So looking at the downtown district here, we're looking at 61 basically from the river down to 8th Street, which is where Schoolhouse Square starts. It's basically an extension of downtown through this area, as you know, and then more residential as you head to the south. You know, we've got mixed use. We're building to the property line, similar to the downtown area. We have two to four floors in some of these buildings. What we're looking at there is to kind of emulate some of the development styles that are down there already, which is bringing these buildings to the street. This would be a concept plan development here for Vermilion Street and 4th Street. This is essentially the bank property here, Wells Fargo, the parking lot, the other buildings down to 5th Street, the fire station here. So it shows a concept where you show a four-story building, could be mixed use, commercial on the bottom, residential above, parking behind, and another building over here. The point of this is to intensify development at those major intersections here, and that's what this does. It would provide for development scenarios that would be intensified towards the intersection and putting the parking behind the property. Looking at the Midtown District itself, that's basically centered on Midtown Mall and Highway 55 down to 15th Street. Little bit different scenario there. You have a commercial development that is more your traditional strip commercial built within the '50s and '60s, and this is something that we were looking to potentially change as far as the development pattern down there. This will take a look at the Midtown Center as a redevelopment proposal here. It's the Highway 55 here, Todd Field. So this right here is the parking lot for Midtown and the Midtown Shopping Mall here. So in this scenario, it's essentially flipped. We've got the buildings, which would be a couple of stories, out towards Vermilion Street, broken up with corridors. You can see the parking behind, access to the parking behind here. So that would bring the buildings closer up to the street, however, not a zero-lot lot or right up to the curb as they are downtown or in the downtown district itself. Now, this is a situation here where would we see this whole thing develop as is like this? It seems like a stretch at this point. Would there be the possibility of specific parcels being developed in this fashion? I think that's more of a potential over time. Then we're looking at the Vermilion River District, which is centered on the Vermilion River from 17th Street down to about 22nd Street. Looking at sort of a similar type of thing here, albeit a little more residential focused, a little more higher stories on Conny Road 47 and 61. This is the vacant former QuickTrip site, I guess. This is where the automotive place is right now on the corner, and the rest of this property here is vacant. So what's being shown for that intersection would be a larger building, three to four stories, possibly commercial on the bottom, and then more residential as you get away from that intersection here. Parking behind the property here and some landscape buffers between that property to the residential area to the west. Again, this would be something where it would be building towards the property line, but not necessarily right on the property line. And then we have what we call the South Town District, which is eventually the county crossroads area from Highway 316, 61 down to 33rd Street. This is an area that was originally intended to be more of a regional center. Walmart was originally there. Coburn's is there tonight. There's also a lot of vacant commercial land in that area that's zoned commercial presently. So this one was more of a radical view as far as what might happen in the future, with the recognition that the amount of commercial land that is zoned right down today probably is more than what the market would bear and what other uses could we have there. And so this one, you can barely see the elements of what's south of 33rd Street today. This would be Vermilion Street here, 33rd Street, and then 316 down towards this direction. So Coburn's would probably be right about here in this development scenario. So it would be a radical change from what there is today. Shows commercial along Highway 61. You have some residential buildings along 33rd Street and some more residential buildings behind here. And so one of the things that we struggled with on this part of it was, you know, how much commercial is going to be here, how much would be left. You know, if you had Coburn's and the other facilities down here in this area, those could still be there, albeit you look at the parking lot across the street, there's a lot of area over there at present. Perhaps that could be done in a different way. These are some of the transportation elements we looked at with the plan as well, taking a look at existing cross-sections of roads here, and then some of the proposed cross-sections for roadways as you go down there with a little more planting and some more tree and landscape elements around the corridor itself. So we're looking at this here as we're going to be looking at this in the future for redevelopment projects. The purpose of this plan is to provide a guide plan for someone who may choose to look at developing or redeveloping a property. What is it that the city is looking for in the future on that one? And so it's not intended to be a document in which "Thou shalt change this." And so we would be using that to in looking at development in the future. One of the things that we also want to do here is perhaps be more proactive in identifying what sort of obstacles are there towards property development? If there is a property that is vacant or underutilized at present, and the developer may be seeking something that would be of a higher rate of return on the investment, what obstacles are there that would prevent one from doing that? And are those obstacles something that the city may assist with? With HEDRA, we have a redevelopment loan fund that we could help with gap loans. Would that be a possibility with providing some incentives for environmental cleanup or other redevelopment? Would that be of something that may work? So those are things that we're reviewing presently, and we're also looking at those different redevelopment sites that are vacant that we think would be the most easiest to develop, and working with those private property owners to see what their interest would be in doing that. So that is what we have for the plan itself, and I can stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Alpa.
John, this is a guideline, correct?
Correct.
So if a business comes in like CVS and says, "Yeah, we don't want to build it close to the road like our plan says," we can deviate from this to facilitate their requirements or their needs, right?
Yeah, like with the CVS project, for example, we had a Vermilion Street plan previous to this that said something similar on that intersection, that building should be placed near intersections on that one, and the Council, the Planning Commission reviewed that one, and ultimately it developed it as it did with the parking in front.
So are there proactive things that we're doing to pursue any of this?
Yeah, we are talking with some of the larger landowners there to get an idea as to what their plans are for development, to get an idea of which properties would be apt to develop from this plan here, and then work with them to identify what sort of obstacles there would be towards implementation. You know, there's properties in particular, you know, the one that comes to mind for me is the one at Vermilion Street and Highway 47 that QuickTrip had purchased, partially cleared there. You know, that's a larger open property with just one business remaining at a key intersection there. You know, perhaps that would be one that would be, you know, most ripe for development.
How about some of the improvements that are mentioned in the transportation section for the Highway 61? Like roundabouts, things that we'd work with MDOT on?
Yeah, with those type of things, we didn't do much as far as transportation or traffic changes to 61 itself, and that was intentional this time. The last time we did this, we were focused frankly too heavily on transportation changes, and it kind of hijacked the project, and it became a transportation plan instead of an economic development plan. MINDOT is going to be going through and doing plans for 61, I think, within the next five or 10 years. The one thing that this helps out with here in identifying what we, some very basic elements of design on here, is we can use that in our discussions with MINDOT when they do 61 as our intention or our plan. We had a similar thing when we did the, when the bridge project came in. We'd done the Heart of Hastings Downtown Plan about 2003. The bridge came in about 2009, and we'd be able to point to that plan saying, "Hey, this is what we want."
Was it also looked at the economic side of it? I mean, as far as what financial incentives or things that the city can do to help try to get businesses in as well? I mean, it's good to have a plan, but if we don't have any businesses that are willing to come in, it doesn't do us a whole lot of good.
Right, right. And that's what we're speaking with individual property owners to determine willingness to develop, obstacles to develop, what fits. We've got existing tools that we could use. Would those tools work? If not, what tools, changes might be necessary?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Burris.
John, has the city talked at all about doing a market study and housing demand to support this? I mean, a lot of this is geared around, you know, significant density changes. So for, you know, developers to look at a concept and marry that up, you know, they need to see demand. So have we talked about doing anything like that before to, you know, help show that it's there?
It's a good question. We have not planned on doing that, but I think that's a good thing to consider.
Okay.
Also, I think if they're planning on looking at increasing housing density means more people, it'd be nice to see them focused on getting some mass transit into the city as well to help show for people in and out to make it a larger number of people that would look at moving out here. Especially younger folks that may be interested in the higher densities.
Any other comments? Otherwise, I think we'll move on.
Great report. Thanks, John.
Thanks.
Next item, Great River Landing update.
All right. Well, Commissioners, I put before you as a summary of some of the activities related to Great River Landing, Hudson Redevelopment Project. The purpose of doing this is twofold. One, it's been a long project. We've been working on this for about 10 years. And secondly, any official action before the Planning Commission, last time we took something before it was about three years ago, and we've had some new faces. So I thought it would be good to present kind of a summary of what's occurred and what to expect here in the future, because as the Planning Commission goes, there's still a couple steps that we will be taking here in the very near future. And so I think everyone's familiar with the Hudson site, so I won't spend too much detail on that. But Highway 61, 2nd Street, property's been here since about 1909. Right now, it's 100,000 square foot building on 4.3 acres. So what you see right now in this aerial photo is what will be saved and what will be rehabilitated. You may recall there was other portions of the building that were removed in the past, but what would be done with this property here is it would be rehabilitated as a historic tax credit property, and it would be rehabilitated into 67 hotel rooms, 20 residential units, and about 20,000 square feet of commercial space. The commercial space would consist of a banquet facility and perhaps restaurant and some other retail that would be within the building itself here. So when you take a look at the building as it sits, you would have the commercial aspects of it towards the eastern end, towards downtown, and the residential elements towards the west here. So this is what the project is looking like today, and I'll stress today, because they're still working on the landscape plan element of it. But parking would be a surface parking lot here, which would come in off Lock and Dam Road, as well as what's happening across the street at First National Bank property. You've probably seen that First National Bank is no longer there as of a couple of days ago. That property was purchased by Confluence Development, who is the developers of the Hudson site. It's Pat Regan locally and Bill Whalen from Whalen Ventures out of Louisville, Kentucky. And so they're jointly developing the Hudson property as well as the garage across the street. The Hudson property purchased from us, that property we purchased in 2009, 2010, and spent some significant amount of time and cash rehabilitating and environmental cleanup of the property. We went through some land use studies early on, market studies, and we were looking at this from a HEDRA standpoint as an economic development site, not necessarily a redevelopment project, and with the option open as to do we just level the site and have a spot for development, or do we rehabilitate the building itself? And from our discussions and meetings we had with the public, it became clear the public was desirous to keep and rehabilitate the building, so that's what we did, which is a lot more time-consuming and a lot more expensive process to go through on it. From an environmental side of it, there was with a project that's been in industrial use for a significant period of time, we had a lot of soil vapor and soil cleanup issues that we had to contend with. Fortunately for the project, we were able to receive a significant amount of grant funds for the project. I think we've had about 20 grants for $5 million over the last seven, eight years to help with environmental cleanup and with some of the site amenities issues that you're seeing, including the parking ramp here was through grant funds, 1.5 million, and then the park development, which will be here, was another million dollars that we received for site development itself. And so what we did early on is we went through some of the cleanup of the property, partial demolition of the property, and then looked at developers and eventually entered into a purchase and development agreement with Confluence to take over the building. It was a couple-year process while they put some plans together, and we finished up our environmental remediation. One of the preconditions for transfer of the property was to give them a clean site. And throughout the process here, we cleaned up all the soil on there. The only remaining item that we have environmental-related is the installation of what's called a vapor-intrusion mitigation system, which is essentially an active system that's placed under the building that would vent the vapor out. And so we're going to be funding that through existing grant dollars when the construction of the HVAC facilities occur within the building itself. So we'll have that responsibility a little bit further down the line. So we ended up going with Confluence Development. They're developing the property as what's called the historic tax credit property, which means they are seeking approval from the State Historic Preservation Office, the National Park Service, to be able to go out for these credits. The credits are sold and will bring equity into the project to help with the expenses of the development of it. The difficult item with that is when it's a historic tax credit property, SHIPPO and the National Park Service have a lot of authority over the review and how the property is going to be rehabilitated. And so we've spent some significant amount of time with both those entities in trying to get a plan that would be okay by both of them. And just recently, Confluence did get a letter from the State Historic Preservation Office, from SHIPPO, that they can move on to the National Park Service, whose review I'm told is not as rigorous. So that was a big thing to get through. And so they probably spent three-plus years, I think, going back and forth with SHIPPO, maybe even four, on some of the review for the historic tax credit portion of it. So, you know, the one thing you see down there is you've seen this building and you've seen not much changes that have occurred physically, and the question often comes up, is this project still happening? And there's a lot of things that are happening behind the scenes in this, in going through the historic reviews and the environmental cleanup and the accumulation of grant funding to help with those items, that has taken some time, but has also led to us, the out-of-pocket expense that we've had, be dramatically lightened because of the acquisition of those items. So we did sell the property and transferred it in March of this year. Under the purchase and development agreement, there's a couple of key milestones that are coming up. One is they need to get their building permits into us by December 1st of this year, so it's down to about six weeks or so. We expect to hear back from the National Park Service any day now with their review. Once that is completed, and hopefully the go-ahead is granted, building permits can be submitted for the interior work of the building, so we can get going on that. The other deadline is to have significant construction of this project done by December 15th of 2019. And so those are the two milestones that are looked at right now. And so the parking ramp across the street, right now, the demolition is occurring, and construction that will occur right after the demolition is complete. Some of the prefabricated panels used for the parking lot are in order and on delivery, I'm told, so those will still be installed this season, and then some of the other work will be done in the spring, opening up before summer of 2019 on the parking lot area. For what's left over here, we did have the Planning Commission review the site plan, parking, and some various special use permits on this, I think, three years ago in 2018. However, the development of the park area was not done, so what they'll need to come back to us with is the final park plan of this area, as well as photometric plan and the final grading plan for our review. So that is one thing that we anticipate coming forward to this body within the next month or so, so that we will have that before you. Now, with the park area that's shown here, all the park area is privately owned, however, there is a public use agreement over it. So it's essentially a privately-held space, privately-maintained space, however, it is open to the public. And so we get the benefits of having a park, but not the obligation of the maintenance for the park itself. And so what you're showing here is a concept plan for this. I think this is maybe getting a little bit dated now, so I'm not sure how accurate it would be, but you essentially have the trail coming down the Mississippi River here. You've got some deck area that would be constructed over some existing pylons. If you're down to the site, you'll see there was concrete pylons for an old addition that was down there, and so they're looking to integrate those into kind of a deck overlook area. There'd be plaza space down here as well. It would be open for gatherings and other events, and then some outdoor area here seating for potential restaurant and hotel use in this area. As you look towards the front courtyard area, this is where the parking lot is today and the main entrance. That parking area would be removed and would be done as kind of a garden area, and then the main entrance drop-off would be in this area towards the southeast, where the drop-off would be for the hotel. This kind of gives some images of the park plans that they were showing in the past here. Again, these may or may not still be relevant today, but this is what we had, I think, as of about a year ago on the property, showing what the views would look like and some of the amenities that they'd be looking to do down there.
Hey, John.
Yeah.
What's with the Connexes?
Oh, those? Yeah. Had a similar question on that one. This, what we're looking at doing, and I'm not sure if they still are, would be to have some containers that would be brought in here as kind of bar retail areas in here. They hopefully won't look like this, because these look like a couple of semis dropped them off.
Yeah. Interesting.
Yeah. Just to give an idea here, so the windows will be opened up on the building, blocked windows that are over facing the river now that have been blocked in because of the former addition would be opened back up, and so you'd have a lot more light going down there and a lot more openness. I mean, one of the reasons why we went about the acquisition of this property in the very beginning was, number one, it was the last industrial property we had on the riverfront. Over the years, we've been in a position where we had acquired other industrial properties, done the environmental cleanup and sold them off for development or turned them into park space. This was the last one on the river. Second, with the construction of the bridge, we wanted to have a site that would really be a draw for people to come off of 61 and take advantage of the riverfront and downtown. And so we really wanted to have something that would stand out, something that would be an attraction. And so that's what we were looking at, at this project, is fulfilling on those goals. And I think that's all I had here, so I can stand for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Alpa.
Who is going to maintain ownership of that parkland?
The parkland? That would be private. That would be Confluence.
Confluence would maintain ownership of that?
They would.
Would they have the ability to sell that off?
No. They would not have the ability to sell that off. That was explicitly identified within our park maintenance agreement in there. They have some abilities within the year during specific periods of time that they may close it off to the public for limited periods, but for the most part, it's open to the public.
And that's a perpetual agreement?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seidman.
The park space that I'm hearing about, is that, so that, the whole site was cleaned up to the point of a park-type?
Right. Yeah, we did, yeah, we did a lot of environmental cleanup, soil removal, especially in this area over here, towards the northwest area of the site. There was some deeper soils in there and some higher levels of concentration of lots of icky stuff. So we spent a lot of time over there, and also within the building as well. The building has, half of it is dirt floor, half of it's basement. Under the dirt floor areas, there was some significant contamination down there and challenges to clean it up. I mean, we had a situation where there was a fire at the site, 1909, with the original building. We found out through the cleanup that what they did with the building is essentially bury the bricks in there. bury the bricks in there. And so when we went to do the soil cleanup, it was taking bricks out one by one through floor trusses. So that took a lot more time and a lot more money than was anticipated. Thankfully, we had those grant, environmental grant funds, which significantly assisted with that.
So talk a little bit more about that sheathing or something that you mentioned that's underneath? What was the purpose?
Purpose of that is there's vape, chemical vapors within the soil that could, you know, percolate up to the surface. What this does is it provides a shield and a way for it to vent, actively vent out. So there'd be a fan system through the HVAC that would essentially draw up those vapors and dissipate them out the roof.
It sounds like radon. Is that, but it's not the same?
Somewhat. I mean, it's, I think it comes out of the soil similar to radon, and we would assist with any radon there, any radar, radon issues, because those type of vapors would also be actively drawn through and out of the building as well. But it's just more the residual chemicals that were in the soil themselves. Some of them are buried deeper or get within the bedrock, and the vapors become an issue.
Okay, so the cleanup wasn't, that's part of the cleanup, is you couldn't get it adequately cleaned up? So this would be a system to compensate?
Well, we, we have a cleanup plan that we took to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. And with their recommendations, they identified areas of, this needs to come out here and get to a tolerable level for different contaminants. But you also have the issues with soil vapor, irregardless of the soil that you're taking out of the ground that's contaminated. And so with the property here, since the vapor intrusion system works with the HVAC, it made, it made more sense for us to hold off on that until they do those internal systems, instead of putting it in there, having it work, and then they have to work around it while they're rehabbing the building.
I've got one other question.
Go ahead.
The December 15th, 2019, significant progress, what is, what is that? What's significant?
That's pretty much most of the building there.
Most of the building?
Yeah.
Interior?
Yeah, yeah.
Ready for occupancy?
Mm-hmm.
And where did you say those deadlines were coming from? Where are those agreed to?
We have a purchase and development agreement that we had on the property itself. So as the, as part of the sale of the property, we entered into a purchase and development agreement, which set terms for the transfer, and that was one of them.
So it's with the city?
It is, yeah, with city and Hedra.
I believe that first date has already been pushed back a few months, was it not?
It did, yeah. Originally, that was August 1st for supplemental plans, and the council and Hedra moved that back to December 1st.
And they're on course to meet that, as far as we know?
As far as we know, yeah. I should learn more about that this week with the National Park Service review. National Park Service had one month to review the plan. That plan review expired late last week. And what we're anticipating is that they will, they will be consistent with the SHIPPO review, which will allow the building to move forward and the finances to be obtained at that point. So that, that's going to be a key roadblock that would be taken out.
So we'll likely see something in our December meetings?
Right, November, December, yeah.
Any review from the DNR as far as the work being done down by the river itself? The parks and trails and things?
On the DNR, we, there was some special use permits that we had in 2015 that they took review of at that point and didn't have any significant issues there.
So those are still in fact?
I have a question. Um, the, I want to go back a little bit to that vapor thing. What's it called? Or what, I mean, I'd like to look up something about it to try to have a little more knowledge of.
Sure. It's called a VIMs, a Vapor Intrusion Mitigation System.
I suspect that's very similar to the radon mitigation.
I think so, yeah.
Probably just on a larger scale.
Right, yeah.
And the contractor's name is Clean Vapor.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, they've, they've done some pretty significant projects where they've done this. I know there was one that they, I went through when I was down in Atlanta a couple of years ago, where they had an old Sears catalog warehouse somewhere to, in Minneapolis, where they, they did it there. You know, huge building that they had issues with that.
I've got a quick question. Where's the 100-year flood elevation?
Yeah, 100-year flood elevation is, I've taken, I think it's right in this area. It's certainly, the building itself is significantly above that level. If you look at the river, the riprap that comes up to the trail, I'm just trying to guess, 10, 15 feet at least?
So it's on the other side of the trail?
Right, right.
Is there a basement elevation below that?
Nope. This would be the, low elevation would be pretty much where the trail is. Yeah, yeah. Trail, the trail elevation's about the low floor elevation.
Subject to change, you know?
What's that?
100-year elevation.
Sure, sure.
Right.
Yeah.
I have another question. Is there anything within the contract with the developers, their ability to transfer title on down the road?
As far as the, reselling the building over time?
Yeah.
I don't think there's any prohibition in that. The prohibitions that we would have is that the parkland would be perpetual and the maintenance would be perpet, would be maintained perpetually. That would be key element of it. And that the parking areas in the building would have to be, would have to be held collectively on that. There is, there is the possibility to, as part of a second phase of development, to take the surface parking lot that's here and potentially build another building. If they were to do that, they would have to essentially build it above this parking area and then account for the new parking that would be generated from it. But that could be something down the road.
So what I think I hear you saying is that if it was to be transferred, that some of these, you know, fair amount of elements would stay with the property itself?
It would, yeah. We, we had a bunch of agreements that were recorded with the title of the property on this one. Anything else?
When are we going to see the parking lot?
What's that?
When are we going to see the parking lot? The bank, the old bank site completed?
That, probably spring, late spring of next year. So we'll see the demolition in the next week or two finish up. I think the panels coming in in November, those will be set, some of the concrete panels, and then nothing over the winter. When spring comes, the other pavement and concrete work there.
If you're interested, I did see the safe for sale on Craigslist.
There you go.
Was the opening bid?
I think it was a thousand dollars.
Move yourself, though.
Yeah, if you can move a multi-ton hunk of metal. All right, any other business?
No, I guess the only thing I've got here is, looking at our next planning commission meeting, we've got it scheduled for Tuesday, the 13th, or they have the Observation of Veterans Day on Monday, the 12th, so our meeting would be Tuesday, the 13th on that one. So other than that, I don't know of anything that would be coming forward for that meeting at this time, so I will let you guys know.
All right. Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.